Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 p.m. The July 10th City Council meeting will now come to a halt. This evening's invocation is presented by Vice Mayor Shirley.
Okay, sorry I was not prepared for this. But, dear heavenly Father, we just ask you to give us guidance and direction as we leave this city through this council meeting and be with each of our council members and give them discernment in guiding us through making good decisions that are sound. And, Lord, we just thank you for everything you've done in our lives and all that you do for us beautiful city. We ask that you watch over us through this process, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please rise and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gentry, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Livingstone.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Present.
Councilmember Mike Sable.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reefer.
Here.
And City Attorney Thomas Trask.
Here.
Thank you, Patty. We'll just move right on into Agenda Item One, which is Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion. Motion is made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Mike Sable. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Now we're on to Item Number Two. This is where the citizens get to speak. If any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Any council member would like to respond to citizens' comments, please hold your responses until we reach council comments. If the city manager or city attorney would like to address citizens' comments, please hold your responses until your designated report time. Would any citizen like to address the council about a topic that is not already on tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tammy Lavenda, 97, Harper Drive. I'm here representing the Beller Beach Community Foundation. Just have a couple of updates. As you know, the Adopt a Park program was approved at the last meeting. Please see the details on the Foundation's website or on the city's website. The community brick walkway only needs four more brick orders for free shipping on the pallet. We are currently reviewing options on ways we can get the bricks shipped for free on lower quantities. The bridge cleanup through Kipano, as beautiful as this Saturday at 9:00 a.m., we meet at the City Hall parking lot, and the Foundation provides all necessary materials. We are looking for additional volunteers to help plant sea oaks. They are delivered to City Hall in the next couple of weeks. Please contact us by email or phone to receive more details. We are only waiting for the permits, and the new kayak launch at 16th Street will be installed. The Foundation is looking for volunteers for a variety of committees. Please contact us if you're interested. Please see our website, thebellerbeachcommunityfoundation.org, for more programs and details on our Foundation. We appreciate resident input, and we are doing research for our next project, one that will have positive effects on the entire city, like the before-mentioned Christmas on Gulf Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lavenda. Any other citizens like to speak? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Item Three. Next, we have a presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, beginning with a monthly law enforcement report. All right, do you have a copy of that, sir?
No, sir, I do not. I don't know who was supposed to be here tonight.
All right, let's, I'd like to make a note of that. This is not the first time this has happened. Why don't we just move right on over then to the monthly code enforcement report? And thank you, Deputy Flack, for being here tonight.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioners, Mayor, city officials, and residents, keep that good for the record. As you see in front of you, the monthly report from code enforcement. You'll notice that our weed and grass and overgrowth has raised a little bit, but we are taking care of that, and our imperventated work has dropped. Happy to see that it's down to 7.5 out of percent out of the circle there. Been doing a lot of follow-up, working with a lot of the residents on the overgrowth of weeds and obstructions on the roadways. I've been in constant contact with the city manager also and getting guidance direction to help go along with that. We still have a few problems along Gulf Boulevard that we are working with due to the Duke Energy contract trying to get the underground utilities. Other than that, that's it for my report. I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions from the deputy? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I agree.
You too. While we are discussing the police, the police report, I do have a question for the city manager Reefer. Do you, do you know what the current procedure is for parking and fishing? This is where I'm going. What I've noticed is that suddenly the bridges and the shoreline, anywhere where there's not homes, has become free fishing, and I have yet to see anyone patrol and do anything about it. I've actually rolled down my window and said, hey, you might want to reconsider doing that because they do patrol around here, and you can look an hour later and they're not leaving.
Mr. Mayor, if I may address that, on the fourth, I was out and did catch several people out on the bridges. They were parked and told they could be there. They can't park there. One of them was up on Harrison. We had to move over to the marina. As far as parking fishing off the bridge, there's not really much we can do about that because it's considered open waters. But if somebody parks on the roadway, I give them the opportunity to move. If they don't, we're going to cite them and move them anyway. This one individual that was parked on Harrison went to the marina, didn't pay, ended up getting a $55 fine anyway, so. But I am monitoring any type of street parking like that for anybody who is not doing any type of work in the residential areas.
Okay, and just for clarification, I don't have a problem with someone fishing off the bridge. It's the parking at the entry or exit sign.
Yes, sir.
And it's happening constantly. I'm wondering if you see it in your neighborhood also?
We see it some. We see it some on Harrison, but I know, I know someone who got ticketed for doing just that. So they were parked at more of the inland park areas, you know, where they could park off, where they could fish off the pier, and they were parked there and they got ticketed. So I know that the sheriff is doing their job when it comes to that. But, you know, along with that, I picked up a bunch of beer cans on Harrison because I'm sure they were standing there drinking beer and fishing, and so, yes, it's a, you know, it's an issue, but.
And also, that base side park, too, I've been writing a lot of citations out there for the same thing, where they're just falling in there, not paying, and then going out and fishing along the coast here.
All right, and if we see that, is there a better number than the permanently on the old phone line that we can call?
What I can do is I will get Joe and David's cellphone numbers, so we can, we can call them directly because they do not mind having that happen, and they just have code on it when it does happen. Same thing, I've been giving out my cellphone number, so if there is an issue, I will go check on it. But I will address this with Sergeant Stiver to make sure that we get it up the line and make sure that this is taken care of.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right, let's move right on to Item Number Four. Is Chief Davidson here tonight to present for the Pinellas Sun Coast Fire and Rescue District? No? All right, we'll just move right on to Item Number Five. Presentation. Before I call Mr. Davis to the podium, it's important to know why he is receiving this award. Since 2000, and possibly earlier, Rudy has served Beller Beach in various capacities, including serving on the Steering Committee that made recommendations to the council to replace our aging City Hall. He served on the Citizens Advisory Committee that worked closely with Pinellas County to agree on a design for the Beller Causeway Bridge. He served as President of the Beller Beach Resident Group that formed a PAC and brought the council-manager form of government to referendum. He served as the first mayor of Beller Beach in the new council-manager form of government. During that term, the council elected to move forward with the construction of our community center. He served as a member of the Board of Adjustments. He served on not one, but two city manager search committees. He also served as Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board. I could keep going, but I'm pretty sure that everyone here gets my point. Now, I'd like Rudy Davis to join me at the podium.
Mr. Davis, on behalf of the city of Beller Beach, I am honored and privileged to give you this distinguished service award. You've earned it, and we are very proud of all your accomplishments, and we're truly grateful for everything you've done in this city. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, council members, and city staff, I sincerely appreciate this recognition and my service to the city of Beller Beach. It has been my pleasure and privilege over the years to work with so many dedicated residents to share my love of this community and the desire to protect and maintain the unique character and lifestyle that we enjoy. While working on various committees, boards, and special projects over the years, some of the most satisfying accomplishments have been serving as the president of the Beller Beach Residents Group, whose hard work brought the council-manager form of government to referendum, and subsequent approval by the voters of our city, serving as mayor during the transition into this more professional form of government that continues to serve us well today, and, most recently, to help organize the campaign to defeat the mayor who would be king. I've always felt, like the 73 years of Beller Beach council members before me, that service to our city was fully compensated for by the opportunity to maintain and protect what we have within this small but amazing community, and I never learned a salary for the work. To me, if I were here for the money, I was here for the wrong reason. As I leave behind public service to attend to other matters and require my full attention, I do want to alert our residents to what our city council already knows. There is a serious challenge to Beller Beach and all cities in Florida by the current Florida legislature in Tallahassee. They want to end home rule that was mandated by Florida voters in a 1968 referendum. Their objective is to take away a local municipality's ability to control what happens within its own borders, and take that power to Tallahassee so they can serve the many special interests who don't want you and me telling them what they can't do in our county. Our own local state senator, Nick DeSagele, was the sponsor of the bill that would take away our grandfather's right to live at short-term rentals, and our local state representative, Ken Burfield, voted in support of that measure in the House. We need to press them to either change their views and support home rule or face removal from office by local voters who put them there. Mayor and council should take a very proactive stance to retain your authority in local matters, and our residents should support their management to do so, or Tallahassee will soon take that right away from us. We should all actively support the Local Voices United Project sponsored by the Florida League of Cities. I ask council to make sure every resident is aware of the project and how it sort of supports our right to self-determination. Mayor, council, and city staff, I thank you again for this recognition, and wish you and all of the residents of Beller Beach the very best. Thank you.
All right, we are on to Item Number Six, which is Quarterly Award Reports. Let's begin with the Board of Adjustments Report from Mr. Mike Kelly. Mr. Kelly, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you that the Board of Adjustment has been busy. The Board of Adjustment normally only sees two or three variances a year. We've had two this quarter, and we were supposed to have one this Thursday, but we postponed it. So we had an active board. We've had the same three kinds of cases that have come before us regarding pools. Kyle, so we got a plan to make that get reviewed, and I'm sure everything will work out just fine. But, again, an active board, we're getting a lot of experience with the new members, and if there's any questions, I'll be glad to handle it this time.
Mr. Kelly, do we have any questions or comments?
No.
I think you guys are doing a great job, and I'm hoping we can get this pool.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, now we are on to the Citizens Advisory Committee Report from Mr. Ron Seganik.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Citizens Advisory Committee met this past quarter under our other title as the Audit Committee, and we approved the final comprehensive annual financial report on May 3rd, and it was approved. As the council approved it, and they had fixed errors and filled all the reports that were missing, so I will be needing later this week to review the budget, and that's what we've been up to this quarter.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from Mr. Seganik? No? Thank you again. All right, next up is the Park and Recreation Report from Ms. Tammy Lavenda.
Hi again. Just a couple things from the Park and Record. Once again, I'd like to thank all of our beach cleanup volunteers over the last quarter. We are looking at new items to put Beller Beach logo on. I like the tablecloth, by the way. So if anybody has any suggestions, please contact anyone on the Park and Record or please call the city. We are continuing our new Welcome Bag program for new residents, along with all the necessary information that they need as new residents. They also, we also include some Beller Beach goodies and some local merchant info. If you, as a resident, own a local business and like to contribute something to the bag, please drop off at the City Hall in batches of 10. Please see city website or our e-sign for upcoming fall and spring events. Our third annual Health and Wellness Fair is in January, and we would love to have more resident participation as vendors if you're in the health and wellness field. So, thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Banker. The last beach cleanup, there was a couple residents that raised the issue of raking the beach more often, and I know you were traveling at the last monthly meeting. I did bring it up, and Kyle was going to look into it. There's not much beach to rake anymore, but I think we're working on it.
Yeah, that's great. I know, like, there's a schedule that the city maintenance team has to rake the beach. Are you looking for the Park and Record to maybe get volunteers to do that?
I'll volunteer, but I don't know about the limitations of, you know, somebody getting hurt or, you know, I'll drive a tractor.
No, I did, I did contact the FDEP and the Auto Permit, and they said that we can rake it more frequently. We just have to be cognizant of the turtle season, you know, and sometimes, you know, during the busy season, we, by the time the turtles are clear on the beach, you get people out there, so you kind of can't get it all, but you get around them as best you can. But we can, I'm not sure what our goal is on how many, how frequently we'd like to do it, but we can do more.
Okay. Is there limitations for volunteers to be, I know when you rake, you got to dump it, and then you have to have, I guess, a dump truck to take away the waste, but is that, can we put residents in those pieces of equipment? I don't think we can.
My, yeah, my personal opinion is no.
You don't want to be doing that, or have no insurance coverage for any volunteers? That's what I thought.
To me, it seems like it would be difficult because we don't always know when the beach needs to be raked, just based on when there's, like, something, like a big blob of goo coming in out of the water. So, like, you know, I know it's scheduled, but if, I don't know, we can have maybe something, not on call, but like, that we could do through the city without trying to get groups of volunteers, because we can't always do that on short notice anyway.
And we have to sign a waiver to even participate in beach cleanup. I can't imagine what it would be like to handle a piece of hardware, but, Mr. Reefer, we used to do this regularly. I don't think it was on a regular schedule, but I think it was more of an all-demand. Why did we stop?
The last two times we did it, when the weeds were accumulating on the beach, since I've been here, since '18, our permit's been filled out for triannually and after major storms. So, you typically, what happens is a resident will report a high volume of CV, and then at that point, we'll schedule something.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Lavenda? No? Thank you.
Please.
All right, and finally, we have the Planning and Zoning Report from Mr. J.C. Infill.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, 3221 Ambeska Drive East is represented tonight. The zoning board has met several times since the first of the year. It's not a board that just sits and looks around. Sometimes we look around and wonder, oh, why we got certain things? But we got the comp plan, and just as a, for instance, we spent four meetings on the comp plan and returned it to the council. A total of five hours, two, two, one, and one. And this is times that the citizens devote, and we presented it back to the city. And recently, we were presented an ordinance considering signs, and it's only this thick. And when you go through this, I'm wondering whether it belongs with the zoning board, because most of it, I have three college degrees, but one of them is in law, and most of these presentations are legalese, and we're not attorneys. And I would like to ask the council to reconsider putting this towards the board for our consideration because when it was first reviewed by us, there were a ton of questions. Some I know the answers to, but the neophytes on the board did not understand a lot of the verbiage, so I don't believe that belongs with our board. It was referred back to the attorneys, and we proceed from there. I'd like to thank Patty for helping us out quite a bit, and the city manager's always there, and Randy, and we're a silent board, but we do get our job done, and we know that the city and all you people do a good job, too. And the people behind me that show up, they do a good job. And I lost some members, they didn't die, but they might as well. Rudy ran away from me this year, and that rabbit hole, and on the right side of me, we have been on boards together for the last 28 years. And then another person resigned, and we got new ones that are not familiar, but we keep trucking along. You'll get our reports, but some of these things should be reviewed before they're dumped on us. Are there any questions that any of you lovely people have?
I would like to make a comment first, and I think that there was probably a little bit of miscommunication of what we were looking for from planning and zoning. We certainly, I hope I'm speaking for the entire council, we're certainly, we weren't looking for legal advice, and unfortunately, I'm afraid that that's what was interpreted whenever it made, made its way to planning and zoning. We received numbers that were highlighted, and it was our job to kind of look through it and make some recommendations, pitch it to planning and zoning, and see if you agree, you and your, the other members agree. I don't know how we went down this rabbit hole, but that, I don't think that's what we were looking for. I do appreciate your effort and your time, and I apologize on behalf of the council for the miscommunication. I think maybe the next time we pitch something to any one of these boards or committees, we need to make sure that it's clear and fully understood as what we expect. Would any council member like to make a comment on what I just said?
I sympathize with you with that sign order. Sign, so we can counsel and throw in the trash. I think we went from six, six items to 40 pages in that new sign order. Justice Kagan, I don't want to misquote her, but she says, "This will come back to court one day," all right, when they, because we got some alarms from residents, but I think the old law, the old city manager handled it modestly, beautiful, whenever there was a problem. This man right here, I think, has the same ability to handle it. I think we should trash it, but I sympathize with the whole board in even addressing it.
Thank you very much.
I am, I'm not going to waste Mr. Trask's time to try to explain why, as things have changed over time, that we have to become more protective of our liabilities, and I think that that was the original reasoning for even altering our sign policy all the way around. Again, on behalf of the council, I apologize for.
Apology's not necessary. It's just a matter of communications. Everything's accepted. You have your job, we have ours, and I appreciate it.
I do have a question for you. Now that we know what the actual task is, does planning and zoning have enough energy to review a copy that has the numbers that we, that we inserted showing distances, thicknesses, heights? Because it's not, it's not terrible, but I would still like a second opinion on it.
I understand.
I'm looking for a yes or a no.
I didn't quite understand the question you dumped on.
I would like to, I would like to pitch it back to you again, but this time highlight every number where it's feet, inches, so that you have something tangible to look at instead of legally speaking.
If it's shorter than 45 pages?
It will be 45 pages, but all you have to do is look for the yellow, where it's highlighted yellow. It should be pretty straightforward.
And if we put little marks on the side saying something that needs translation, we'll mark it back to you.
I think we can handle that.
Okay.
We were just looking for another group of citizens.
Absolutely.
So that, so that we can say that the council did not dictate shape, size, height, width, length, et cetera.
That's what I tried to say, to regardless of what we came up with half, well, more than half, 95% of this was passed by the legislature in Tallahassee, so we could have known anything about it if we wanted to.
Correct, and so, anything that could not.
Yes, Mayor, we'll, we'll serve.
Okay.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you so much. Mr. [inaudible]. Mr. Infill, I appreciate your-
You call me J.C., everybody else does.
Any other questions or comments for J.C.? No? Thank you so much for your report.
Thanks.
Have a good night. All right, and Mr. Reefer, would you track down that copy that's got the highlighting on it and make sure that they get a copy of it?
Yes, I, what I gathered from the meeting was that the mod pages, the language, I felt that it was tough to understand. And they worried that the average resident trying to follow the code wouldn't understand the code. So it was left for Mr. Moore to try to streamline it, make it easier to understand.
Okay, is he working on that now?
Yes.
So whatever happens, it needs to come back to us first.
Right, okay.
Thank you very much. All right, now we are on to number seven, the city attorney report. Tom Trask of Trask Dino is filling in for Mr. Moore tonight. Mr. Trask, you have the floor.
Thank you. I did speak to Randy. He said that although he has been talking to you about the adoption of Senate Bill 170, he just wanted me to let you know that he will be working on ordinances, prime ordinances, and direct response to that bill which has now become law. That was the only update he wanted me to give you tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Trask? All right, thank you very much. Now we are on to number eight, the city manager's report. Mr. Reefer, you have it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off with the undergrounding project. We actually started construction phase today for the conduit going in the ground on Phase One. And as a reminder, that's from 28th Avenue South, Southern Jurisdiction of the City, up to Cosway Boulevard. And then moving on, the utility consultants of Florida are working on acquiring the easements and the final design for Phase Two. The stormwater projects, we are currently got about half the streets surveyed. They're coming in as they come into Gemini Engineering, they're being designed. And Georgia Chimp and Associates is planning on, they're finishing up the surveys, so it'll be a matter of two, three weeks of all the surveys in. Personal policy manual, continue to work on this, received the city attorney comments back from Mr. Ashenfeld. He provided a lot of good insight, added a lot to our personal policy manual that was missing, bring it up to a good legal status. And we did a little history, looking into some of the ordinance that were referenced in the previous documents. And it's been, in the past with personal policy, that the city has passed it by ordinance. So in order to make our revision legal, we need to pass an ordinance, which I have Mr. Moore drafting at this point. Hopefully, in August, we'll do our first reading. And what that'll do is it will sort of supersede all the previous ordinances and allow us to, whenever we amend the policy manual, to amend it by resolution with the council, which is the way to do it. I would like to bring up that in our budget workshop, we discussed future savings for a city patrol load for code enforcement from the water. Something's come up this past week where some of our waterway markers were already experiencing issues with the clear water to harbor another use that will come in handy to us. I just wanted to bring that up to the council. Good news, this week, the ongoing code enforcement issue with a tree. I have scheduled to meet with an arborist. I got permission from the property owner to go on the private property and we're gonna do the most thorough analysis of that tree we can and make a decision from there. And then I'd like to come back up to the top project, which is our 2023-24 budget. We have our next budget workshop coming up on July 17th. After that, we will adopt the tentative military. Tonight, in our last budget workshop, we said that tonight we would make a decision on the waste collection services, on whether we are, would like to renegotiate with Waste Management who holds our current contract that is expiring at the end of September, or if we're going to advertise our RFP for those services. Over the weekend, I provided you with some documents of some information that was gathered in the past week and a half or so. First document laid out the price increases, the rate increases that we've experienced in our current contract. Also provided a document from Waste Management that summarized all the cost increases in the different areas of their waste management business. There was a document on the recent Florida municipal bid results across the state of Florida from 2019 to this current year, showing, you know, the different contracts that went out to RFP and were awarded, who they were awarded to, what the percentage of increase was per municipality that went out to RFP. And this, the percentage of increase compares their services directly to their previous contracts. As you know, every city is different, and the contracts are different. So the best way to compare is apples to apples. And lastly, I prepared, I did a lot of research, working with the county on our utility billing, how it's set up, how it's billed through the multifamily dumpsters versus multifamily cans and single-family residents. I tried to lay out where we're currently at, our bi-monthly billing that is in the utility role with all the other county utilities. And how that covers our revenue from that, how that covers our current contract, and then what we were looking at as far as a rate increase for a future contract that the proposed, or the estimated, I should say, increase of 25%. That's all I have. I just want to believe that that decision marker.
All right. Council, do you have any questions for the city manager? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
So, excuse me, so Kyle, so with regards to the waste management contract situation, if the city wants to go out to and use a request for proposal, do you need a decision on that tonight? Is that what I'm hearing?
It'd be preferable. The last time we did an RFP was advertised on June 22nd of the contract year expiring, and they received the bids on July 24th. So we're a little bit behind that schedule. I was told by Mr. Moore that our RFP schedule is aggressive per what he experiences in other cities, but I do think it's doable, we've done it in the past. So I propose that if we do RFP, we can advertise by July 26th and receive the bids on August 29th. I believe we don't have time to bring it to the September regular meeting.
Okay. Is that something we need to vote on?
I make a motion that we put an RFP out, we don't have to, all we're doing is looking for the bids. Maybe we have to leave Waste Management and it would be timely.
Before we do that, I just have one question. What was your thoughts on the data that you sent us? After you looked at all of the data, how did you feel about the price increase?
When I compared it to the other municipalities, cities, counties that went out to RFP, the data shows that the awarded contracts are coming back higher than the proposed, estimated renegotiated rate with Waste Management. My biggest concern is that we go out to RFP and we decide that we want to circle back to Waste Management, but at that point, we're actually paying more for the same services.
Fair enough. What I'd like to hear about your, what your recommendation is to do tonight?
My recommendation, based on the numbers, figures, speaking with other municipalities, and also speaking with municipalities who aren't satisfied with their service after they changed, would be to stick with Waste Management. Through looking at the history of the services to our residents, we've been with them for a long time. I know there's a very positive relationship with our residents. I rarely hear any problem, if there is a problem, Waste Management responds immediately and addresses the problem. So in my, my time as management, even in my previous position, I've been very satisfied always managing.
Mr. Baker, after hearing his comments about this, are you still in the mood to make a motion for an RFP?
Well, I don't think an RFP is gonna hurt us, like putting it out for a bid. So council doesn't want to, council wants to stick with the higher rate?
We didn't come back with any removal of this couple holidays. Did they ever come back with it?
They did. It was gonna make minimal difference to remove the holidays and go out to it one time per week. I just would like to make a point that in my meetings with Waste Management, if they renegotiate, they estimate 25% increase. What they're saying is, if we go out to RFP, they are, based on the numbers, they believe we're gonna come back higher even with our lowest bidder. The last time we did an RFP, the lowest bidder was 13%. Waste Management was 13% more than the lowest bid. We ended up going with Waste Management after doing reviews and scoring process. Again, I would just, looking at all the information, I feel, based on all the time we've had Waste Management and my experience with them and hearing the feedback from the residents, I don't believe that the numbers are gonna come back. I know that Waste Management is saying that they're gonna be higher when they come in to bid than what they're gonna renegotiate at. And like I said, I have dealt with other cities that have changed their services and they weren't happy with the, so the lowest bidder is the one that's the answer. So that's why I recommend that.
All right, so it sounds like we are down to the wire on making a decision, but I don't believe we can vote on this because it wasn't on the agenda for tonight. Am I correct?
You can vote on this tonight, can, though it's not part of the-
We can vote, yes. Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion to move forward to approve this contract rate increase?
Well, that's gonna come back to you. This is just, do you want to go out to RFP or not? The negotiated contract will come back for approval.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is if we have to approve, that's a whole month from now, or we have to do it in a special meeting.
So that contract will come back to you after your next break in the meeting, if it's been properly prepared?
Yes. They want us to commit to renegotiation to start the process. We need to make a decision on whether we are going to go with an RFP or actually start a negotiation.
Okay. So if anyone would like to do a new RFP, I'll need a motion, otherwise we go forward.
I have a question. We're locked into the rating proposals, right?
No.
We're not locked into that rate? He came out and said this will be the rate for the next year?
So the projected rate is we're looking at a 25% increase. Now, they're gonna draw up a contract that's in the late, probably very similar to what we have now.
I think what Mr. Reefer is saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if this goes out to RFP, they have to get in on it also, and we may not necessarily get the same rate back.
That is precisely what they're telling me.
Council, comments?
Is this something that we need or ask for comments from the citizens?
Well, we're not voting on anything, we're just asking for-
That's a comment, okay, yeah.
Yes.
So I appreciate very much the position that Kyle's in. Here's what I have difficulty with. First of all, when the current vendor made the comment that we're willing to negotiate a certain percentage increase, which we think is very good, that they're saying, however, if we go out and we ask for a request for proposal, they're sort of threatening, for lack of a better term, that when they give their proposal number, it's probably not gonna be as good as the negotiated number? That sounds very odd to me, first of all. Secondly, when we're dealing with taxpayers' dollars and we don't know, we have no clue what the other competitors may be bidding through their proposal. Anytime I've ever been involved with a government organization, I spoke with Kyle on this, every organization has some minimum amount of money that if you're gonna spend, it has to go to a request for bid or a request for proposal that exceeds that number, which is a good thing. Now, Kyle pointed out to me that actually there's verbiage in the current contract that we have with Waste Management that says, we have the option of renegotiating with them without going out to another RFP. Again, I don't support that, only because the unknown is and what we may be hit with if we do it the other way. Another company probably will come forward and say, hey, you know, if you're going out to proposal, I'm confident I would have beat that number. And then we're sitting in a very uncomfortable position with the way that we spend taxpayers' dollars. So that's what I'm uncomfortable with, without going that route. I can't imagine another company like Waste Management saying, well, we would negotiate with you with a number of X, but if you go out with a request for proposal, our number's gonna need X plus. That makes no sense to me.
Thank you for that comment. Other comments?
Well, the only other thing is, the number that Waste Management threw out to us is public information. And dealing with contractors all my life, anyone that's gonna bid this job's gonna look at that number and say, I can beat it, or I'm not gonna put it in. I'm not saying Waste Management isn't gonna come back and say, we're gonna up the rate or whatever. You never know. I mean, trash is a dirty business. But I have no problem with Waste Management, they do an excellent job. I just think they're a little bit high on the cost. I mean, they haven't, last year, if you remember, they came back and said, well, fuel is up $5 a gallon, and this is up, and labor's up. Their labor costs have bottomed out this past year. Fuel is down $4.50 a gallon for diesel, we go for $6. And where do we get 25% increase? So that's, that's the problems I'm having.
Well, I guess what we need, we need to find out if we have a consensus on this at all. So what I would just like to hear is from each council member, what they think, which one they prefer to move forward with the proposed contract or to do an RFP and start over. Ms. Livingston?
I really appreciate Kyle's vision on this and where you're leading us to go, and I appreciate everything that you do. And I have no doubt that your decision or the way that, what you've recommended, you believe wholeheartedly that we should do. However, Frank and Lloyd have a very good, no business, goes without getting a request for proposal. And I love Waste Management, I love what they've done for the citizens. They're great. They've bent over backwards for us. But I think doing our due diligence for the citizens and seeing where we get our price point with the others.
Mr. Baker?
I would agree with her.
Fair enough. Vice Mayor, share a word.
I think we should go out and offer bids.
Mr. Zabel?
Concur. Go out for the RFP.
Mr. Roberts?
RFP.
Ms. Natero?
I agree with City Manager Reefer that we should go ahead with the Waste Management contract.
Well, in this case, I am in the minority. I agree with Mr. Reefer also. But the council has pretty much said their feelings, and I-
feelings, and I think, um, we need a motion to go to an RFP.
Motion for the RFP.
Second?
Motion made by Frank Baker, seconded by Mike Zabel. Mr. Baker, do you have the floor?
I think we should just see about competitive bidding. Hopefully it doesn't come back and bite us. I mean, I don't think it will, but, um, that's all I have to say.
All right. We, we made a motion. I'll reply. I'm going to have to make comments from the citizens now. Would any citizens like to make a comment? Yes, sir. Mr. Hanson?
John Hanson, 22nd Street. I was here for that workshop. I was one of the few that saw Purse Mear when he discussed this contract, and I listened to the Waste Management guy. My question would be, are we at the end of the current contract? Typically, when we do these contracts, they're multi-year contracts, and within those contracts, it stipulates a maximum cost increase? Am I correct?
It stipulates a maximum cost increase of 4% based on the cost index in the past two years. If you look at the layout of the CPI increases they've asked for more during the inflationary prices.
Good. Thanks.
Right. Just said to you also, the, the original agreement that was prepared specifically was for a set term until September 30 of 2023. So the term is up. So you, we're not going to be able to bind over Waste Management on a specific dollar amount because the term of the contract has expired. And the contract also provides, as City Manager has mentioned, and I'll just read the language for you, the city may indicate a desire to renew the agreement for an additional term. The term is 60 months. Upon giving the contractor 30 days prior written notice in the intent to renew, renewals shall be by mutual agreement. In such event, this agreement may be renewed under the same terms and conditions, including the payment adjustments as set forth in Section 9. Section 9 shows the dollar amounts, and then all the subparagrafts saying, these are the reasons why we can increase it, like the CPI, the gas, and those types of things.
Okay. I wasn't completely clear on whether we were at the end of the current contract or not. So, okay. Um, the other thing is, as I recall from the budget workshop on this topic, the consensus then was you were going to lean towards leaving that door open, but consider seriously RFPs. So I think you're going in the right direction. Take a chance, but I can't see what this gentleman was trying to justify, 25%. That's way beyond what I think is reasonable. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Would any other citizens like to comment on this topic? All right. Back to the council. So this is a motion to, uh, to an RFP for, uh, waste services. Um, I guess we can just do it all in favor. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. So we have one opposed. I went the other way to be with the group, and the opposer was Leslie Notaro. Anything else, Mr. Riefler?
That is all. I'll get on it.
Okay. I did have one more question for you, which was, um, the boat. What, how much money are you proposing to spend for boats?
Um, right now, I found a government contract for a patrol boat. It has a lot of options on it. Um, it's for shallow water. Uh, and it's good until 2020, I believe it was. So it bought us some time on the purchase, but I, I budgeted $100,000. I know that's rough, that's high. Um, I know we can, uh, negotiate if we, if we decide on the exact, uh, model that we want, and then go out to RFP, probably get a lower with less options. One thing I do not want to do is give a used boat. I think that we need something that's, that's new and, and, you know, in good condition.
Uh, and $100,000 today is not much boat. Um, let me ask you this. If you got your boat, would it keep you from jumping in the water again?
Because I wasn't going in.
I, I can't say that 100%.
All right. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Riefler? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Kyle, um, back to the stormwater improvement projects, which is wonderful that we're moving forward with all of the balance of the, of the streets. My question to you is, I know we discussed once before, you had actually offered that the engineering firm at some point would come forward, either via workshop, which would probably be more applicable, or a council meeting. What would you kind of visualizing how that was going to work? Were they going to be more on the front end, or after they get weighted to design, what do you think would work best?
I was envisioning, and what we kind of have laid out in our, uh, our schedule is once they get to about 90% design, um, and have looked at all, all different options and coming and adjusting the council, and that's still on the table.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the City Manager? Nope. All right. So now we are on to item number nine. This is the City Clerk report. Ms. Gentry, you have the floor.
No report this month, mayor.
A report. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Or the City Clerk? No? All right. Thank you, Ms. Gentry. All right. Now we are on to the consent agenda, items 10 through 14. This is for approval of the April 17th, 2023 City Council Work Session Minutes, approval of the May 22nd, 2023 City Council Work Session Minutes, approval of the June 5th, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes, approval of the June 19th, 2023 Budget Workshop Minutes, and approval of the June 21st, 2023 City Council Work Session Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as consent agenda is proposed.
Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Leslie Notaro. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Patty, thank you so much for catching up.
Thank you.
The consent agenda passes. All right. We are now on to the regular agenda, item 15. This is for consideration of appointments to the Park and Recreation Board. One position is for a full two-year term. The other is to fill a term that ends in September of 2023. We have two candidates tonight who have expressed interest in filling these positions. Uh, the first is Susan Conti, and correct me if I pronounced that wrong, and the second is Michael Leaks. Is Ms. Conti here? Minnesota, would you like to introduce yourself to the council?
And yes, correct. Thank you for having me. My name is Susan Conti. Uh, my husband Angelo and I recently moved into the Bel Air area. We purchased a property and will be building a home, so we're very excited about that. And thank you for the welcome back, uh, because it was great. It was nice to receive that. Um, we moved to Florida about three and a half years ago. We're full-time residents. We have five adult children. We have seven grandkids. Um, I own my own business. I'm an executive coach. The business is called Designing Leaders. I work individually with leaders to help them with their executive presence. Uh, prior to that, I spent 35 years as an executive in nine different industries, so I've got a lot of experience. Uh, I'm excited to be here tonight, primarily to just get myself introduced to my neighbors, but also to offer up the opportunity to work and serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conti. I'm going to, I'm going to get you to hang out here for a good second. All right. Um, uh, let's see here. Would anyone in the council like to ask Ms. Conti a question? Yes, Ms. Notaro?
Um, under the application saying I've been a resident of the city of Bel Air Beach for one month.
Yes. So we, we lived in San Key, and we sold our condo and recently bought a property. And we're also, so we bought a property, and we're also leasing a property so we can be near where the build will take place. So it is recent.
Other questions? Okay. I have one, uh, which I'm, I'm a little confused about. It says that you've been registered in Bel Air Beach since January 2020, but you've lived here for a month. Um, can you explain that?
No, it must be a mistake on my part. I'm not sure on the application that was part of that registration date.
The order of registration date.
Oh, I probably was thinking about just being in Florida. Uh, we moved in, I think it was December, November, December of like 19. So I thought what I was thinking was in general.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Anyone else on the council? All right. Thank you again, Ms. Conti. Very nice to meet you. All right. Is Mr. Leaks here? If so, would you like to introduce yourself to the council?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Michael Leaks. I am, uh, a resident of Bel Air Beach since 2016. I'm a Tampa native. Uh, I have lived in Pinellas County my entire adult life, and I've lived on the beach since my last 15 or 16 years. And then in 2016, I settled to a better beach. Um, I am a electric window nearby training. I am a general contractor and developer since 1992 in the state of Florida, as well as Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Tennessee. I am, uh, again, I've been a resident here since 2016, and I have always had civic, social, volunteer organization experience. Uh, and now I'm at, when I retire, I'm a retired executive for Duke Energy, and I have more capacity. Uh, I want to use that capacity to serve my home community.
Thank you, Mr. Leaks. And I ask you to hang out for a couple minutes also. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Leaks? How long did you stay with your?
Since, uh, Bel Air Beach, 2016, to Florida my entire life. And I did, well, personally, I have three, uh, three adult children, 36, 31, and 27, and I have four grandchildren.
I have a question. Um, since this is a park and recreation spot, would you consider this to be a gateway to another position somewhere else in the future?
Yeah, I think on my application, I put I could serve in any capacity.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other questions or comments for Mr. Leaks?
So how long will you would do?
28 years.
Anyone else? Who wants? Thank you, Mr. Leaks. Very nice to meet you. All right. Before I ask for a motion to appoint, would any citizen like to speak on this matter? Nope. Citizen comments are now closed. Uh, now I'm going to need a motion to appoint to continue. Motion to appoint.
Yeah, I can put the question back. How, how do the two positions differ? Patty, I guess we go to Patty. I mean, I, I understand that one is for a full term.
I can explain this. They're exactly the same. It's just that one is a full term, and the other is to fill the gap from an existing member.
Okay.
So, um, one is a very short term, and that person can reapply whenever that term is up. And the other is a full three-year term. Ms. Notaro, you have a question?
Does that mean that in September, at the end of September, we're going to have another appointment?
Yes. I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So now I'm going to need a motion to, uh, make an appointment. Motion. Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. All right. Mr. Baker, do you have the floor? I guess we just now both take the ballot? Makes sense to me. All right. It's time to vote. You can vote for both, one or nine, but you must be specific about which term your candidate is being selected for. No two candidates can fill the same term. For both terms, each must have a minimum of four votes to be appointed. If needed, the council will make up to three attempts to fill both terms. If either of the terms are not filled, we will advertise and try again next month. I don't expect that to be the case. Does everyone have a ballot? All right. Let's vote.
Yes. Councilmember Baker voted for Ms. Conti for the term ending September 23, and Mr. Leaks ending July 25. Councilmember Livingstone voted for Ms. Conti ending September 23, and Mr. Leaks July 25. Councilmember Notaro, Ms. Conti, September 23, Mr. Leaks, July 25. Councilmember Roberts, Ms. Conti, September 23, Mr. Leaks, July 25. Councilmember Zabel, Ms. Conti, September 23, Mr. Leaks, July 25. Vice Mayor Shirley, Ms. Conti, September 23, Mr. Leaks, July 25. And Mayor Gaddis, Ms. Conti, September 23, and Mr. Leaks, July 25.
Thank you very much. So it's unanimous, Ms. Conti will take the September 2023 term, and Mr. Leaks will take the July 2025 term. Uh, congratulations to both of you, and thank you for serving our community. All right. We are on to item 16. This is consideration of Resolution 2023 dash 04. Mr. Trask, are you prepared to read the summary?
So this is Resolution 2023 dash 04, Resolution of the City Council of, of Bel Air Beach, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2023-2024 non-add warm assessment rule for the Bell View Estates Island Assessment Area, directing certification of the assessment rules to Pinellas County Tax Collector, and providing for an effective date. That was the reading of your resolution 2023 dash 04, my title line.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trask. Mr. Riefler, I'm assuming that you, you put this on the agenda and had it generated. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Would you like to explain the need for this resolution?
So, uh, with the assessment, this is a requirement that we do every year. We recertify it, and we do it typically in July every year.
For what? Probably half, 15 more years?
Uh, it's, that sounds correct. I would say 15, and, um, basically what happens is, um, so she hit for Prag, it goes through the three different loans, uh, make sure that, um, everyone who paid off is removed, and then checks the interest rates, um, and, uh, we recertify, and we submit it to the property appraiser to get billed.
All right. Thank you. Uh, before we move forward, would any citizen like to comment on this proposed resolution? Any citizen comments? All right. Council, I'm going to need a motion to approve this resolution. Motion made by Leslie Notaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jody Shirley. Uh, Ms. Notaro, you have the floor.
Um, Leslie, any other questions?
Thank you. Any, uh, other comments, uh, on this resolution? Nope. Pretty much just standard housekeeping every year. Uh, in that case, uh, this is to approve Resolution 2023 dash 04. Ms. Gentry, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Zabel?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Riefler? Thank you, Ms. Gentry. All right, we are on to item number seventeen. This is for authorization for the city manager to execute a contract for law enforcement services for the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department for fiscal year 2023 through '24. City manager, Reifler.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the law enforcement contract. Typically, in previous years, we had law enforcement on its own contract and code enforcement on another contract. This year, when the new contract was drafted, it was made clear by the sheriff's office that it's unusual that we have two contracts. It has to, if I was, would consider going to one contract. They said the terms of the contract would be the same essentially, just combined and leaving our code enforcement services as a, as needed basis, which it, which it has been in the past. So the new proposed contract for the amount for the law enforcement services is the $592,716. That is an increase of 7.94% from last year's. And then the code enforcement is billed on a per-hour basis and increased to $55.66 per hour, which is a 7.5% increase. There's a little history. The Pinellas County Sheriff's Office has done our law enforcement since 2007. We disbanded the police department. And the code enforcement services, we've used sheriff's deputy to assist since 2020. From the beginning of code enforcement being done by Pinellas County, we use them at a twenty-hour per week rate. Last year, we decided during our budget meetings that we would drop it down to fifteen hours per week and see how it went. That's going to go well, in my opinion. And I propose that this current budget year, we, starting October one, we utilize twelve hours of code enforcement per week, supplementing with in-house staff. And this contract has been reviewed by the city attorney and it's provided.
Thank you, Ms. Reifler. Before we move to the council, I need to go to citizens for comments. Would any citizen like to make a comment? Yes, Ms. Tranty.
John Hamsin, 22nd Street. It's interesting. The annual increases year over year get higher and higher. This is close to 3% more than this current fiscal year, I believe. So I don't know what's going on. Inflation's down.
Thank you, Ms. Tranty. Any other citizen like to comment? All right, citizen comments are closed. And now we're back to the council. Before we continue, I'm going to need a motion for authorization for execution of this contract.
So move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lloyd Roberts. Vice Mayor Shirley, you have the floor.
We've got a contract in front of us. And I think we all have an opportunity to review it. The Vice Mayor, the City Attorney, and maybe take a vote.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Banker?
Page four of this contract. Refresh the county memory and the citizens. Bell Air Shores' sheriff's deputy, how many hours a day does he share? Is it one hour per shift or two or one hour?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. I know it's been reviewed at least in the past two years. I can find that out later. I forgot what was determined.
I was told it was like one hour per shift. But a couple residents have raised questions to me. And I've noticed in the last couple of weeks, and I'm excluding July 4th weekend because Bell Air Shores actually paid for extra police service, deputy service. But just noticing on the beach and the parking lots that I frequent, just one day and two weeks ago, the deputy spent almost three hours from Sixth Street to 12th Street, ticketing cars, taking a tent off of Sixth Street, taking two umbrellas off of 12th Street, and taking two bicycles off at Sixth Street. Now, we spend over $17,000 per hour. Three hundred and sixty-five days a week, forty-seven some dollars an hour. I believe Bell Air Shores is getting a bargain here because we no longer get the tax, we no longer get the fines for the parking in those three parking lots. So they get out, they have to write it up. Once citizens did an inquiry on how much time was being spent, it was well over more than three hours a day. Because if you look at the house calls they do every day, they do them twice a day, there's no way they can do this in two hours. And I believe we should be giving, if Bell Air Shores should be giving at least three hours a day back to us for the service, which would save you guys and us over $17,000 in this contract. So I think we should table this contract. I'm putting it on the floor right now that we should make a motion to table this contract till we get a review of how much time Bell Air Shores is actually using our deputy, one bar time.
We have a motion to table on the floor right now. Would anyone like to second that motion? All right, the motion dies. And so the conversation will continue. Would anyone else like to make a comment about this contract? Mr. Z.
Yeah, I understand that obviously the rate did go up in referring to code enforcement. But the dollar amount does not, because of lower hours, obviously, offset any potential increase here. What I'm going at, I mean, I understand the concerns about Bell Air Shores. But at this point, I believe the best method is actually you approve the contract. And now that we have the contract, then we go forward to approach Bell Air Shores with, you know, reducing the potential hours in. Because this contract is between us and the county, not us and Bell Air Shores. So I'm recommending that we go forward with this contract.
Thank you, Ms. Zabel. Other comments?
Well, legal question. Can we sign this contract and then go back into charge of Bell Air Shores? And we find out they're using, and it could be more than they're paying for?
This contract specifically provides that you're going to share the deputy. Doesn't say anything other than that. So once you sign this contract, this will be a complete and full course. As for any contributions made or set out by Bell Air Shore, that would be an agreement between this city and Bell Air Shore. It would have nothing to do with the share.
And my question is, it's an open-ended contract when it comes to time that we're sharing the deputy?
It is open-ended to the extent that we use the word "share" and it doesn't have any specifics.
And that's my, that's my problem, that we're getting, our citizens are getting taken in. Our citizens are telling them they need to remove this and they have to move, remove that. And our deputy, we're paying our deputy to do that. I can't, I can't vote on a contract till we get some specifics in this.
I'm not sure whether or not this has changed from last year, whether this was the same language as last year. I don't know.
From what I understand, it's the same language, the same assessment of the percentage of time. I believe it is. And because other areas have similar contracts with the sheriff's department, I think that the goal is, is to be able to tend to demand anywhere that it's needed. And other than the sheriff not being here tonight or the sheriff's department not being here tonight, which I'm very disappointed about considering we're debating over their contract, I have no complaints with the service that we've received. I think that we could step up directives such as the street on-street parking, things like that. And I would also be interested in knowing if part of that contract includes them being here. Because this is, I believe, is the second or third time that we've had a meeting, a public meeting, and did not have any coverage. So I do have a problem with that and it needs to be resolved. I don't think that it will, it definitely won't prevent me from voting for this contract. However, I won't this address going forward. And I think no matter what, we should always have someone on side to make sure that the community and the council and the staff are all safe.
Any other questions or comments? Let's take it to a vote. All right, this is for authorization of the city manager to execute a contract for law enforcement services with the Pinellas County Sheriff for fiscal year 2023-2024. Patty?
Councilmember Bankard.
No.
Councilmember Livingstone.
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Zabel.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis.
Aye, so it passes six to one. Mr. Reifler, you are authorized to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item eighteen, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? All right, we will move right on over to city council comments, which by the way, this is item number nineteen. This month, the randomizer begins with Councilmember Zabel.
Great. Two big items that are up in front of Florida people right now, especially us. One is beach renourishment. And the second was high insurance rates. And I just wanted to draw your attention to the work of the city council, specifically Councilman Bankard and his continuing fight to get lower insurance rates or even get questions about the insurance rates answered by our elected representatives in Tallahassee. And second of all is beach renourishment. The mayor has been very vocal in working with various local groups specifically on this topic. And maybe you can address it later on. But the next Big C meeting, I understand there's going to be some updates on that issue. And I believe we're hosting it here on the 26th.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, we usually supply free food, you know, coffee. And it's really good to understand what's going on with the rest of the beach communities. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. All right, now we are on to Councilmember Notaro.
I don't have further knowledge.
All right, we'll move right on over to Councilmember Banker.
Today I sat down with Representative Kennedy Bearby on our state rap about wind insurance and the changes they made last December. She was unaware of a couple of things. And I'm talking about in the statute now, which requires each individual, if they want to carry wind insurance, it now has to match their flood insurance. And she pointed out to me that she's looking into secondary homes compared to primary homes and maybe adjusting the rates there to make it more equal. But one of the things I addressed to her was about insurance fraud. And what the state has done now is they've put themselves in a $750 billion liability when it comes to costs because they're escalating all these policies to be maxed now. So you have to max at $250, $75,000 for contents. Then your flood has to max at that. And to rebuild some of these homes are well under $400,000. So the first thing people do is get an insurance adjuster to come out and they just raid everybody. Now, she says, well, you know, that's insurance fraud. And then I gave her the statistics and said there was over $125,000 roofing insurance fraud claimed or found fraudulent claims just in 2020. I said, so they found $125,000. How many really got away with it? So she's going to readdress this and get back to me with a couple of people in the state. And the other thing is, I've been talking to Rick Scott's office. I thought I was getting somewhere with him. And the end of last month, he sent me a consent form to get into this deeper. And then last Monday, I got another consent form from one of his liaisons to fill out. And I actually blew a gasket. I had his chief of staff on the phone saying, oh, it was a misunderstanding. We're going to get it. So I wrote to Rick Scott and I mailed it right down to his Naples address. And I did get a call today from FEMA. We're going to have a sit-down hopefully within a week or two about the percentages deduction noted in 2.0 for per-flood elevation that everyone is supposed to be getting here. But if you look at your elevation certificate without, or if you look at your premiums without your elevation certificates, it's probably the same with your elevation certificates. And for each foot or eight, six inches, you're supposed to receive a discount. Plus the city's supposed to get a 20% discount for the things we did to modify to 2.0. And nobody from the NFIP FEMA can show us where that discount is. So that's all I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Banker. All right, Mr. Roberts, you're up.
Thank you.
I just want to compliment both Mike and Frank. At our last workshop that we had, a topic came up that Mike had been working on for a while regarding the sandbag challenges that we have back over here off of Ninth Street. And the cool part about it was, so Mike made his presentation as to why he thought the best idea, and how many of you people saw this, was to move the sandbagging operation to the Marina, which was an idea. And then Frank said, brought up reasons as to why that probably wasn't the most effective process for our city or our citizens. That's when it really happened. And this should happen, I think, each and every time we have discussions about what we think is best for our city. Because through a discussion by all seven adults that are up here, a whole different approach came to be, which was really the best solution and fixed the problem. The problem was traffic flow coming in and out. But through that discussion, I don't know how many of you people have actually participated in that infamous, you're on a rocket ship and you crash on the moon and you have fifteen items that you need to rank from one through fifteen as the most important. And you do it individually. And then you get together in a group. And I've done it many, many times with departments that I've worked with. And each and every time, the group's solution is superior to every single individual ranking in the ten-to-fifteen member group that's been put together. And that's what actually happened with this scenario about the sandbag operation. Because Mike then heard different input and he put together a solution that we, excuse me, we moved the traffic flow problem, which there's a little space behind us over here that's going to allow the traffic, if everybody agrees to it, to come down Ninth Street and then exit all in one motion and get back out onto the harbor, which was really the problem. So it was just kind of cool. I just want to thank everybody on this council to work that through. And it came out really nice.
Thank you. Councilmember Livingstone.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Conti and Mr. Leaks for volunteering. We appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Shirley.
I'll leave Robert for me.
Vice Mayor Shirley. All right.
Okay, this month I have little to report concerning beach nourishment. At the Big C, beach nourishment dominated the meeting. However, the county is still holding out in hopes that the Army Corps will have a change of heart. I get the feeling that the county has prayed that if they fully fund it once, they will be expected to fund it every time. In the meantime, the majority of the millions collected from the bed tax continues to be spent on advertising to bring more and more people to our beaches. Perhaps I'm missing something. But if there's no beach, when they get here, then what happens? I would encourage everyone here to contact your county commissioners, not just one, not just the one that represents us, but every single one of them. And demand that the county create a plan and fully fund beach nourishment for San Key Island. As mentioned once before, council, we have an upcoming budget workshop and tentative military rate meeting on the 17th. And finally, I have heard rumblings that at least four members on this council are either ineligible or have decided not to run. Again, apparently having to submit full financial disclosures is already having an impact, which I suspect was the whole purpose of enacting it. So the question is, do we really need seven council members? Or should we reduce to five? Next, should we increase our terms to four years and align them with the general and midterm elections? Aside from cost, cost savings, overall turnout should increase dramatically. Finally, should we increase term limits to three? Currently, we are limited to six years or two terms. I have seen firsthand that this limit prevents our city from gaining any traction in the county. Our needs and our opinions have little weight in Pinellas County due to the lack of time to build these relationships. My question to each of you is, are you willing to consider restructuring the city council in our election cycle? in our election cycle? I ask this because it's very, very important to me that our city do its very best. And it looks like the path that we're going right now, we're not going to have either the amount or the quality of candidates we've had in the past. So I just want to take an informal survey right quick. Ms. Notaro, would you be interested in having that conversation?
Mr. Zabel?
Yes.
Ms. Livingstone?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
We need to see the conversation about making the changes.
About the changes?
Yes.
Mr. Banker?
No.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Yes.
So I have a four to two, and then I would make five. So I will be reaching out to Patty to see if we can schedule a work session to discuss this. Whether we make changes or not, I believe it would be irresponsible of us not to have this conversation. As always, I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight, as well as those who watch remotely. Do I have a motion to, or motion made by Frank Banker? It's always first starting line, right? Who's doing a second for me? Leslie. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Good night, everyone.